Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 23 meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There are two sign up sheets in the foyer for our hearing this evening. One is a sign up sheet if you're speaking, the other is a sign up sheet for attendees of these hearings. In case further information needs to be sent to you regarding the cases, please sign in on these sheets. Our meeting is being recorded for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are directed to a microphone. You are to direct your statements, questions, and/or responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings this evening will be required to take a note. Now, thank you for your cooperation. Could you also silence your cell phones at this time? Okay. On our agenda this evening, after a review and approval of minutes for January 9 meeting, we have two public hearings. Our first will be CWSP 22-0307 for their O'Reilly Auto in Hollywood, their CWSP amendment, followed by CSP 22-0120 for their O'Reilly Auto in Hollywood for their concept site plan. Following that, any new business, and followed by adjournment. This time, I'll let the board members introduce themselves.
You start with me?
Mr. Brown.
This is John Brown.
Kim Summers.
Eddie Robrecht.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Joe Fazekas.
Merle Evans.
Also with us this evening, we have county staff. We have Courtney Jenkins, who's the Deputy Director of Land Use and Growth Management. Her planner is Brandy Glenn, and the Senior Administrative Coordinator is Jessica Birch. Also with us this evening, we have Assistant County Attorney, Mr. John Hauser, the Director of Public Works and Transportation, Mr. Jim Gotch. We have Ann Wells from St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission, and we have, from our NAS Pax River, we have Mr. Alec Young, who is representing them this evening. Also with us, most important, is Amy Carter, our video media producer. Let's see. Did everybody have a chance to review the minutes from the January 9 meeting?
Yes. I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes that were written for the January 9 meeting.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Fazekas. Mr. Van Kirk, you're first on the list tonight.
Aye.
Ms. Robrecht?
Aye.
Kim Summers?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Fazekas?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Thank you all. Okay, moving right along. Let's see, our first case this evening, lots of papers here this evening, lots of papers. Okay, first one would be for the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the O'Reilly Auto All persons testifying this evening are going to be asking questions or anything. If you'd stand at this time, and I'll get everybody sworn in. Okay, raise your right hand. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. Courtney, take it away.
All right. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Planning Commission members. Agenda item one is a Comprehensive Water and Sewage Amendment for the O'Reilly's Auto Parts Store in Hollywood, CWSP 22-0307. The CWSP amendment seeks approval to amend the water and sewer service categories from W-60 and S-60 to W-3D and S-3D for approximately two acres. The site is located at 23836 Mervel Dean Road in Hollywood. The land use is mixed-use medium intensity, and the zoning is Town Center Mixed Use, TMX, with an AE4 overlay. Here is a map showing the proposed revision of water service category to W-3D, and the proposed revision of sewer service category to S-3D. The uses allowed in and development regulations for development in the medium-intensity mixed-use zoning district are intended to create large-scale and clustered commercial and residential uses adjacent to existing or planned principal transportation corridors. And per the Comprehensive Plan for Town Centers, they are secondary growth centers, which are located at Charlotte Hall, New Market, Mechanicsville, Hollywood, and Piney Point. They are to be urban and pattern-informed, and designed for moderately intense residential, commercial, and industrial development, supported by provision of community facilities and services. The public notice for the Planning Commission public hearing was published in the Southern Maryland News on January 6 and January 13. The property has been posted in accordance with the CZO requirement, Section 21.3.3. Certified mail receipts have been received and have been entered into the record of this public hearing as Exhibit 1, and the agenda was posted on the website on January The CWSP amendment was reviewed at the TEC meeting that was held on June 22, 2022. The proposed development lies within the Hollywood Town Center, a planned growth area, Calls for the provision of central water supply systems in development districts and town centers, and Section 7.6.1.B3A directs that planned sewage service be provided to growth areas. Therefore, this amendment is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The proposed connections would serve a future commercial use approvable in the Town Center Mixed Use zoning district. Section 70.8.1 and 70.9.1A of the Comprehensive zoning ordinance require the connection of new development to public sewer and water systems. The Marley-Taylor Water Reclamation Facility and the Lexington Park Water System are currently adequate to serve the proposed development. All construction will be in accordance with the St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission's standard specifications for water and sewage construction. Before an amendment to the CWSP is finalized, it must be reviewed by the state for compatibility with state laws and programs. A copy of the proposed amendment has been submitted to MDE for distribution to appropriate state agencies. Staff anticipates that the proposed amendment will be found to be compatible with applicable state laws and programs. And per Section 1.5.3(c)(2) of the CWSP, Principal Technical Evaluation Committee comments from the Health Department and the Metropolitan Commission must become part of the record to complete the application. These comments were attached in the staff report. And this concludes the staff report and is entered into the record of this public hearing as Exhibit 2, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, do we have any questions of staff? No.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Being the newbie here, let me ask a question that I'm sure all of you all know. You said you had a meeting with the TEC back in June, and I understand that you no longer have meetings, that the 30th of June is when you stopped having meetings. What agencies in the county were represented in that particular group?
Well, for the TEC, it consists of Land Use and Growth Management, Department of Public Works and Transportation, Addressing, the Health Department, MetCom, any agencies that would need to review the project and provide comments when it's first submitted. So even though we don't technically hold TEC meetings anymore, we will if the applicant requests one, but we still adhere to those same, like, review timeframes, and we still submit any new projects to all of the applicable agencies, gather those comments, and just send them directly to the applicant.
But in listing those, do I understand that the Sheriff's Department and the emergency, whatever you call it, department, they're not part of the TEC, or they don't participate?
I believe the Sheriff's Office, the School Board, State Highway Administration, there's a long list of different agencies.
A what?
Oh, I said there's a long list of the agencies. I didn't list all of them, sorry.
But they are getting it, and are supposed...
So the State Highway Administration is one...
Well, I am well aware of State Highway.
The Sheriff's Department has a representative that would occasionally sit on the TEC meeting?
Yes.
And I spoke with you, and I reached out to Sheriff Hall, and I have two representatives that I'll start sending a report to on a monthly basis. But we do not get comments from the Sheriff's Department. We never have.
What about the emergency?
They're not part of our TEC.
They don't get, do they even get the information?
No.
Because when we're getting into the world of adequate public facilities, they're one of the players in there, or should be.
Do you mean emergency services?
That's why I asked the question, okay?
Emergency services? They're not a TEC agency.
Well, I just didn't know why they weren't playing. Okay, enough said. Just getting educated, Mr. Chair. If you can tolerate me for a few meetings.
We'll give you a couple meetings.
Sheriff Brown, I actually agree with you on the emergency services. There've been a few applicants over my past five years or so where, you know, it was a subdivision of a family property, you know, and they're doing the fourth or fifth subdivision along a family driveway right away. And I've always had concerns about could emergency services vehicles, equipment, actually get up there safely if there was an incident, like a fire or some kind of thing like that? And, yeah, it kind of alarms me that they are not involved in this process. So, I mean, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I just, I share your concerns that emergency services is not involved in the TEC process.
Well, what I would like to know is, if the Sheriff's Department doesn't participate, I'll make my call again.
Courtney, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
I didn't really even realize that the TEC didn't meet anymore, but everybody who did meet under the TEC guidelines, they're still sent to packets?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So they're still making comments, if applicable, to the program? And I wasn't really talking about emergency services, but we've had cases before where it recommends a fire hydrant or a sprinkler system, or some sort of devices within a building, a pool station, fire alarm and stuff. Who does that go to?
That probably is reviewed during the building permit process.
I got you, okay.
And the fire marshal does review those.
Because I thought at one time, when the TEC, didn't the county fire chief sit on that or something and make recommendations about things?
I'm sorry, I don't...
I think Mr. Gotch has got a response.
Good evening, Mr. Gotch.
The department does review the plan and does make comments on hydrant locations, access into the building if there's a fire.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry for sidetracking everything.
That's okay. I didn't even realize it.
No such thing as a bad question. Okay. Anything else from staff? Anybody have any more questions for staff? Does the applicant want to make any comments during the CWSP part?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Could you speak into the microphone? Just bend it down. You can sit up there, sure. Just remember, this is just for the CWSP part.
Sure. Good evening, Commissioners. Just want to say hello. This is Haley Carpenter with Bowler Engineering, representing O'Reilly's tonight. No comments for the CWSP amendment.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I have one quick question from MetCom. Just out of curiosity, where is the water and sewer lines now? Are they already up past there on Mervel Dean Roads?
They are, yep. They're basically across the street from where the property will be.
How far up Mervel Dean are they right now?
A good question. I don't know the...
I'm just curious, but they're already across 235 and over that side? Okay. Thank you. Just curious.
Questions?
Bless you.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to public testimony if there's anybody that has any comments on the CWSP part of this hearing. You can come up now. Yes, sir. Can you give us your name?
My name is John Camp. I own the property next door to Dollar General property, so I wanted to address the commission. This may be a concept site plan in this part of the meeting, but I'll state it anyway because I'd like to talk about it. We handle the, we're downstream from this project, the tractor supply, and all the way up, Mervel Dean Road. I'm also downstream from the ice cream store across the street. We handle all the stormwater funnels into our property and then down. There's been in the past problems with some flooding that we handle on my property that floods all the way down to the properties north of me also. So I want to make sure that in the plans, stormwater is adequately addressed in this project. And one of the things I did have a question on was that the concept site plan shows additional parking on the site, which is impervious. I just want to make sure that's all handled adequately, and if we can, even handle more stormwater than would be required, just because I want to stop potential problems in the future. The other issue I have, which is not really an issue, but an experience, is that auto parts stores sell oil and antifreeze and other liquids. I have, in my experience, in the shopping center industry, it was about 40 years, handled lots of instances where people come in and they work on their cars in the parking lot and dump the oil. I've got a stormwater pond right in front of the site. It's a logical place for somebody to just dump the oil. I don't know if there's any way we could put a fence around that to stop that from happening. I'd like the, maybe the developer or O'Reilly's could address that issue. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm going to have a couple questions during the concept site plan for you regarding a couple things, but when we get to that, I will certainly have a couple questions if you're sticking around for the next...
I'll be around.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there anybody else that would want to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public testimony and open it up to the board for deliberation. Does anybody have any concerns about the CWSP part of this project? All right, if there's no questions, would anybody like to make a motion to pass this Y'all calm down now, not everybody at one time.
Just looking at you. Mr. Chairman, will you educate me on, you wind up having two votes on something like this?
Yes, sir, we have to pass the...
Educate me as to what you're really voting on in one group, and then the next votes?
All right.
In general?
As it shows on, I think this is basically just, right now, on that piece of property, and Brandy and Courtney, keep me straight in case I get away on this. Right now, it has permission for water and sewage in six years, is the way it's been approved right now for that lot. Or we're asking this evening to change that from six years to, and I believe it's to three years. Both of them are developer-financed, so that they can proceed faster with this piece of property. Did I get that one?
Yep. That is correct.
All right.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the change from W-60 to W-39. Did I say that? And from S-60 to S-3D.
It's 6D.
6D, oh, okay. I wrote a zero. Okay.
All right, we have a motion to amend the water and sewer category from W-60 and S-60 to W-3D and...
S-3.
S-3D.
Right.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second, Chairman.
I have a second by Mr. Fazekas. Okay, Mr. Van, can we do the vote? Ms. Robrecht?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Fazekas?
Aye.
I'll vote also. Okay. That's the easy part. Okay, now we'll move along to, let me shift some work here. Okay, our next case this evening will be a concept site plan, let's see, for the O'Reilly Auto Parts, number CSP 22-0120. Action requested is review of a concept site plan for 7,453 square foot auto parts store.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Agenda item two is concept site...
Before we get started, in case there's somebody that didn't, let me swear everybody, everybody, I pretty much remember who I swore in before. Was there anybody that didn't get sworn in during the Comprehensive Water and Sewage Plan that plans on speaking during this one? Okay.
All right. I'm going to start over.
Sorry.
That's okay. Agenda item two is a concept site plan, CSP 22-0120, for the O'Reilly Auto Parts Hollywood. The concept site plan seeks approval for a 7,453 square foot auto parts store. The site is located at 23836 Mervel Dean Road in Hollywood. The land use is mixed-use, moderate intensity. The zoning is Town Center Mixed Use with an AE4 overlay. The regulations for the Town Center Mixed Use District provide opportunities for residential and commercial development within town centers consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Standards are intended to create an urban character and to make the core area safe, pedestrian-friendly, and visually attractive. Per the Comprehensive Plan, secondary growth centers are Charlotte Hall, New Market, Mechanicsville, Hollywood, Piney Point, urban and pattern-informed, designed for moderately intense residential, commercial, and industrial development, supported by provision of community facilities and Use Type 77 Retail Sales Limited is an establishment engaged in low-volume retail sales of goods and merchandise not specifically listed under another use classification, including but not limited to specialty stores engaged in retail sales of antiques, appliances, art, art supplies and services, new automotive parts and accessories, excluding service and installation, bicycles, cameras, carpeting and floor coverings, coins, electronic equipment, handcrafted items, hardware, hobby materials, jewelry, kitchen utensils, medical supplies, office supplies, paint and wallpaper, photographic supplies, records, sporting goods, toy stores, pawn shops, grocers, liquor stores, or delicatessens. The public notice for the Planning Commission public hearing was published in Southern Maryland News on January 6 and January 13. The property has been posted in accordance with the CZO requirement, Section 21.3.3. Certified mail receipts have been received and have been entered into the record of this public hearing as Exhibit 1. The agenda was posted on the website on January 17. The concept site plan was reviewed at the TEC meeting held on June 22, 2022. The use of Retail Sales Limited is a permitted use in the Town Center Mixed Use zoning district. For all non-residential multifamily residential projects that require major site plan approval, a concept site plan shall first be approved by the Planning Commission before the major site plan may be processed for approval by the Planning Director. This is a public hearing which enables all who wish to provide information to the Planning Commission. In order to approve the concept site plan, the Planning Commission shall make the findings that the proposed development is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and applicable functional plans, may be served by adequate public facilities as required by Section 70.2.2, will promote the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, adequately developed recreational and other community amenities are provided in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan and the Comprehensive zoning ordinance, is consistent with Chapter 62 Design Objectives. The only outstanding issue is the applicant must obtain a signed APF form from DPW. This concludes the staff report and is entered into the record of this public hearing as Exhibit 2. Bowler Engineering is here representing the applicant. Are there any questions for me?
Questions for staff this time? Okay. Thank you. The applicant like to come up?
Good evening again.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, Haley Carpenter.
Business address.
Yeah. We are on, sorry, I'm totally playing Gig 16, 701. Sorry. It's in Bowie, Maryland.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, do you have a presentation or anything that you wanted to give to us this evening?
Yes, is it possible to...
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So today, just to give an overview of the O'Reilly's Auto Parts proposed in Hollywood, Maryland, as stated by staff, this is a 7,453 square foot auto parts store. The site is approximately two acres and is zoned as Town Center Mixed TMX. The proposed use, number 77 Retail Sales Limited, is permitted within that zone. This is a existing conditions drawing, given the two-acre site, again off Mervel Dean Road, currently is not developed and has wooded vegetation and limited other natural features. You can see the site plan here, which proposes the O'Reilly's Auto Parts Store and associated parking and circulation. Access will be provided, one entrance off of Mervel Dean Road, which is being coordinated with the State Highway Department. It'll be a two-way, oh, sorry, that's okay, two-way access, and there'll be 37 parking spaces proposed. There were 30 required, so we have submitted a variance for the additional spaces. All other zoning requirements are in compliance with the code. You can see here a circulation plan with the right-in, right-out, or, excuse me, full access. the right-in, right-out, or sorry, excuse me, full access, um, entrance off of Merrell Dean Road, as well as pedestrian connectivity to the right-of-way. Last here we have the landscape plan, which is, again, in compliance with the St. Mary's County requirements. We are proposing a buffer yard B along both the east and southern sides of the property. The north and west sides are not required to have a buffer, but we have provided street trees and shade trees as required. We have also provided additional interior green space to, um, as required by the code for the additional seven parking spaces. I believe it's 200 square feet per additional space.
Could you back up one frame? Is that a, um, within all your plantings, I'll say, that are on the southern part of your lot? Is that a fence I see in the middle?
There is a retaining wall along the southern side of the property. I don't believe a fence is currently proposed.
Would the applicant be, how would he feel about, or how would they feel about having a fence around there? You have a residential piece of property to the south of that. I wouldn't want it so people could just walk between the trees. We had a speaker a little while ago talk about people that possibly could work on their cars in the lot, and we'll speak about that in further here in the, as we go along. But I think a fence would, um, some sort of a, I'm just gonna call it a fence, some sort of a fence to keep people from venturing onto that neighboring property there.
The plan, I think the plan shows a fence.
Well, that's what-
Yeah.
Back, north corner, around the back, and all the way down the southern side.
Around the stormwater pond. I just wanted to make sure that that was, um...
It doesn't go around the northern side of the building. It stops at the northern corner.
Yeah.
I thought it showed that as, I think it, no?
Oh, it's-
I thought it said fence.
The buffer yard. So you have to have a buffer yard in the, in the back house, right?
Yeah, well, that's where all the plantings are at, is, is on the southern, southern part of that piece of property. But I just wanted on, for the record, that there, there would be a fence, some type of a barrier there to keep people, I mean, trees are trees and bushes are bushes, but you can walk through them. I want to make sure that people can't walk onto that residential piece of property. And I believe it shows it in that drawing. Says property retaining wall. Top of the wall is, let me see if I can blow this thing up enough for me to read it.
I want to do this.
I'm sorry. It doesn't say retaining wall.
Yeah, it just says property retaining wall. Can you explain what that retaining wall might be?
So typically, the retaining wall would be a block wall with geo grid as necessary, depending on the geotechnical engineer recommendations. So again, I don't think a fence is currently proposed.
All right, so you're gonna have a block wall all the way around the southern, and I'll say going up the east side of that to, to the property, to the stormwater management area, round on that side?
Correct.
Okay.
This is not asking for any buffer reductions, is it?
No, it is not.
Getting what's required?
Yes.
Right, they're giving, they're giving what's required. Note, no variance is being requested.
Would the retaining wall have anything on top of it, um, I'm just, because of the residential property next door, um, any type of lattice work or anything like that, anything that, I'll say, dress it up besides just a block wall?
I don't think we currently have a specific detail for that, but we can certainly take a look at the aesthetics.
If you want to be a good neighbor, you might want to think about that, putting some type of top on that retain. I mean, I'm glad the retaining wall's there. It's even actually better probably than a fence, but as I say, you have a residential piece of property that actually looks down onto your lot. Might, might be a nice recommendation. I won't put it as a condition or unless other board members do, but it might be a consideration by the applicant to do so on that.
So I'm just trying to understand the, um, the grading of the site. So water, you know, running from, you know, rainfall would flow from, I guess you call it northeast towards the southwest, towards Merrell Dean. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
In the existing condition? Are you asking in the existing condition?
I'm just asking like, like, um, yeah, how does, how does, um, rainfall flow on the site? So from the gradation, looks like it goes from northeast to, towards Merrell Dean on southwest. Does that seem an accurate statement?
Generally, yes.
And, okay, so from the parking lot, from, you know, you're asking for seven additional spaces, you know, paved spaces. And, and where's that water from the paved area? Is it going straight out to Merrell Dean, or is there a catchment area?
No, it will go to a proposed microbioretention that is running along Merrell Dean Road. There are going to be at least three microprac, microscale erosion, or, sorry, stormwater management devices that will treat the runoff from the site to meet 100% ESD requirements as part of the development.
All right, and so just, just my own experience, and I almost always, almost every meeting, I make a excuse. I'm not a native, native around here, so I, I apologize. But from, from my area back in the Philadelphia area, um, we had a, a local chain called Pet, um, Pet Boys, um, and I frequented them a lot, especially when my cars were breaking down and stuff, whether I was leaking oil or leaking antifreeze, because, you know, when I was young, I couldn't afford a nice new car. Um, I'm sure that each rainfall, looking back, those fluids that leaked from my car went downwards and stuff. So is, you know, is this micro detention system you're speaking of, um, I mean, is it going to handle some of these toxic things such as motor oil and antifreeze? I mean, um, I mean, just my own gut feeling is that those things are incompatible with any kind of bio remediation.
So to answer your question, microbioretentions are not designed to treat those types of toxins. They do remove pollutants in general, but those would be, I'd say, specific to needing pre-treatment. However, given that this is a limited retail sales store, the intended use is not to actually service the vehicles, and therefore it would not be classified as a hotspot that would need that pre-treatment.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that because in your, Brandy, in your presentation, it excludes services-
Service, right.
Yeah.
Or repair, I believe it's.
Correct.
Yeah, sure, sure. The zoning actually excludes that. However, it's not gonna stop me, and I'm, I'm a quart low in oil, because my, my engine's leaking oil.
So you're gonna do it in the parking lot? Is that what you're suggesting?
I've done that many a times, unfortunately.
And it, and wouldn't that be?
Uh, yeah, well, well, it's, 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 you know, when I was, when I was starting out, it was, it was the only thing I had to do, you know? So, um, the other question I have for the applicant is somebody else testified earlier that runoff may go down the road and onto their property. Is this bioswale or micro, whatever it's called, adequate for the 37 spots that you're, you're requesting, so that none of the runoff from the property, even if somebody like me as a teenager, you know, adding, adding oil or whatever to my, my car, and I spill something on the, on the, the paved area, and it goes down to, you know, it rolls off next rainfall, is, is the, the, the rainwater, um, I'm looking, I'm lost for words, but the, is the system designed in such a way that that runoff is not going to go past what you are proposing in order to go down to other properties?
Understood, yes. Our stormwater management approach here is to treat, again, for quality management with those microscale practices. We will also be analyzing, versus the pre-development conditions, the runoff in the 10-year storm and evaluating if that can be managed on-site. So that's being addressed as part of our conceptual stormwater management plans.
Thank you.
Picketing on that, would you be willing to put signs up on your, around your building or site that, that prevents, signs that say prevent, that would prevent service work done on-site? We do not allow servicing of automobiles on-site or in parking areas, something like that?
I'd be happy to discuss that with the applicant.
Yeah, I think you should.
Well.
So we don't have one of him.
I don't, I think it would be impossible to stop a, a person here and there from coming out of the store, screwing the top off a quart of oil and dumping it in, but changing oil.
Changing oil.
I'm never, I'm not saying nobody's ever done it, but.
Well, to me, cha, adding a quart of oil and service work.
But I mean-
So if you put, you know, no service-
You can't imagine many people would bring all their tools and an oil pan and everything to the parking lot. I mean, I'm not saying nobody's-
Fazekas does.
No, no, I never did that. Never did that.
Oh, okay.
That's driveway.
Pushing out in the parking lot, I saw him.
Service work versus somebody dumping a little bit of antifreeze, and I could certainly see that. Car's running hot, you're gonna put a little bit of-
But are they gonna, where are they gonna throw the empty bottle? That's the question.
Well, I'm, I imagine most businesses have a trash can in front, right?
Yeah, I don't think it would be much of an issue.
Not really a cert, but something that just says, um, service work on your vehicle, prohibited or somewhere.
I don't know O'Reilly's, because we don't have any around here as far as I know, but I know most of the auto zones and Advance Auto, they'll take you back, put a battery in for you, put windshield wipers on. So I'm not sure O'Reilly's policy, but, you know.
But they can on this, it's-
Well, they probably can on any legally, because if the zoning on one is this, the zoning on the other is the same, no service work, but.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, like I say, it wouldn't cause any kind of a spillage, I wouldn't imagine, from putting somebody's windshield wiper. I'm just saying it's a, it's one of them necessary evils that I don't think you'll ever be able to-
Control.
Fully guard against, so it's.
Until we get to our F-150s, they're electric. And there's some of those, but that's another story.
Was there anything else?
That's all for me. If there are any other questions.
Any other questions? Um, Mr. Gotch? Guess you thought I wasn't gonna call you up tonight.
I swore in today. I knew I wouldn't get out of this.
There you go. Well, one of my concerns is, um, we've got a crowded little village down in there right now. And I noticed the, the APF form hadn't been signed as of yet.
Correct.
And that has to do with your department. Is there a reason why that hasn't been completed yet?
Well, we don't sign the form. We just approve it. So we've, we've told the traffic consultant that as soon as they sign the form, we'll give them a formal approval, but they have not signed the form. So we made comments. We said in the, if you look at the form, on the right side, there's something that says existing conditions or conditions, and had them add the speed limits of the road, and then said, send that back, sign it, send it back, and he sent it back without a signature. So we're waiting for the one to come in with the signature, and as soon as he does, we'll approve it. It's 19 peak-hour trips in the morning, 21 in the afternoon. So no traffic study required with it.
Okay. Um, no concerns. I know across the street where the Early Bird is, they're gonna have a entrance, basically on either side of their, their entrance. You don't see any, any major problems or problems with any sort of turns and such right in there?
No, these are, these are all individual parcels that have a right to access the roadway. It's a state highway, so we make comments. We'll review the stormwater, storm drainage, site layout, that sort of thing, but State Highway is gonna approve the entrances onto the roadway.
Okay.
And State Highway also reviews the storm drainage, too. They'll make them do an analysis of the flow in any storm drain system and check what their flow, what their increased flow does.
And when y'all looked at the traffic, I'll say, um, issues that are, you want to be in there, did you take into consideration the new project that's coming up right down the street with the addition of their traffic and such right in that little area? Because I know, like, in the evenings, if this thing kicks off, I mean, O'Reilly is a good auto parts store, I don't have any problem with that, but you, and I'm not, I'm not even gonna put tractor supply in there with it, but you're gonna have O'Reilly's, you're gonna have the Dollar Store, which is, stays pretty busy most of the time. The Early Bird, which stays busy all the time. You have Brewster's, which on, on evening time, especially, I'll say, three seasons out of the year, is always busy, has traffic that actually leaks out onto the, to the road for their driving window. And then we haven't even really gotten into what's coming with the new site, how that's gonna impact. Of course, you have two auto repair places that are, that are right in line with that, and also the Moose Lodge, which does get busy. So was all that thrown into consideration for that?
Well, we, we're not asking this applicant to analyze the traffic for all the other developments. If there was a traffic study required, all that would be back, anything that's in the pipeline would be background trips and a traffic study.
Agreed.
They're generating 19 and 21 trips, morning and evening, so they're not doing a traffic study. So there's no analysis that's done that analyzes all the background from any future projects that are coming in, too. We did ask them to look at all the intersections out at 235, and most of the intersections, you know, the shortcut ways out to 235, were operating at a level of service A. When you go all the way down to where the Outback is, I think that's a level of service D, if I remember correctly, just where all the traffic backs up to turn left on 235.
Can't say I completely agree with you on that, Mr. Gotch. That little ramp coming up for the light that goes across to Airport View Drive, I guess that is, backs up a little bit quite frequently. During the day, it might not be too, too bad, because I'm, I'll be honest with you, I don't get there a whole lot during the day. I know in the evenings, and of course, that's gonna work out both ways, because the auto parts business, by the time, I'll say the Brewster's kicks in, Moose Lodge has their things going on. I don't know what's gonna be going on on that new lot. They kind of, I won't say evens itself out, but some of them are more, are a whole lot more busier during the day. But I don't know how that intersection that comes out right there to Airport View Drive is an A.
I think you said that was a D, didn't you? Where the Outback is, down there, which-
No, he's D, D down there. I'm talking about Airport View Drive. That's Airport Drive. Airport View Drive is the one that comes up, right up there where the, um, Industrial Park is and all that is. Been some bad accidents right there, as a matter of fact. Okay. It's gonna be your world. It's gonna be your signature on that, so.
It is, yes. And, and that's all based on the traffic study, or a traffic report that we have that analyzes the intersections.
Okay, well, we didn't get to see that report. So, okay. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
So, we're requiring a traffic study for this individual project, but we know that there are going to be other projects coming. Collectively, when do we get to the point where we look at all of these things and decide that maybe there's going to be an issue or there is an issue?
Everybody speaking to your microphones, too, please, when you're, when you're doing your thing tonight.
Okay, so a traffic study is required if a site generates more than 50 trips, peak hour trips. And so the first person who's developing a larger site is gonna do a traffic study and include all the background trips that are on that roadway, or anything that's planned in the future on that roadway, any known plans.
So I'm assuming, and this certainly was before my time, but the Tractor Supply, the Dollar General, the Brewsters, was there a traffic study for those?
I don't know about Brewsters. I don't think there was for Tractor Supply. I don't, I don't believe there was anything required on that store. Brewsters may have, I don't remember how many trips Brewsters generated, I was in a different role at that point, so I just was occasionally here during the meetings, but I was not involved in that one.
I guess what my concern is, is if you look at, this is such a dense area where it looks like we have, you know, the Tractor Supply, the Dollar General, the Brewsters, and then the O'Reilly's, you know, collectively, in and out, you've got a lot going on. And is that an issue to be looked at in the future?
If there are road improvements that are required, it would be State Highway road improvements. So we wouldn't be dictating what would happen in there in the future anyhow. It's all State Highway. And State Highway has also reviewed and provided traffic comments or their recommendations as well.
So as Commissioner Summers was alluding to, so at some point, could there be somebody who wants to develop their property, O'Meara Dean, in this area, where now we have approved, that's as a commission, five or six different developments along the way? And each one's incrementally very small and didn't require the traffic study? But now combined, you know, we've got 300, 400, you know, trips, you know, per day, whatever, that this last person who wants to make use of their property, which is their right, now gonna be unduly burdened with the responsibility for a traffic study? Because, because now the traffic has gotten to such a point? Or would they be held to the same standards as all these other individual properties? In which case that, you know, you know, we approved it, we may do it tonight, and now, as a commission, now we go back and say, wow, we approved all these little things which made very little impact on traffic, but as a whole, you know, over, you know, five, six years that I've been on this board here, we've now created a traffic condition that now there's no remedy.
Well, I understand what you're saying, the last, the last person in the door.
Always.
Gets to do all the improvements. I think what happens is you get into a situation like Charlotte Hall. So you do a, if a site gets approved in Charlotte Hall and you know you have intersections that are not meeting the grade, that developer is not responsible for doing the entire improvement. They just have to make conditions not worse or a little bit better than it is before they came in. So the same thing would happen here. If 944 ever got too busy, the last person to develop their parcel, if they had over 50 trips, so if it's one of the larger parcels that generates 50 trips, then they have to do a traffic study. If things were failing at that time, they would have to do improvements to maybe not take a D intersection to a C, but to not make things worse at any of the intersections.
They're responsible, they're responsible for their, for their impact. Whatever their impact happens to be, that's the responsibility that they bear with regard to the intersection.
Correct. And that's that county develops as a whole.
Right, it's always been that way.
35 is different than it used to be.
Right.
235 was two lanes, and now it's.
And we don't, and we don't have the ability, Lord knows, to dictate to the state, you know, Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway, on anything that has a route.
That is correct.
So, I mean, it would be, it would be nice, but we don't.
I know the department has tried over the years.
I understand that, but, but we don't, we don't have the ability to do that. And so first guy in is always X. And then the, and incrementally along the way, people are supposed to address their, their impacts on intersections, whether it's Mr. Thompson's intersection where it's a D, or any other intersection. So, you know, it's, it's the cards we've been dealt.
And I think we have to be careful. We don't want to, I just think of liability, from the liability side from Public Works, is I can't impose a condition on a developer that is against what the ordinance says they're allowed to do. So if the ordinance says you don't need a traffic study, you guys can impose that condition and ask for a traffic study. But as a department, the ordinance says if you're under 50 peak hour trips, no traffic study.
Yeah, we was told years ago that we could. I was, I was gonna ask that question. We can always ask for a traffic impact study on any project, I believe.
And you have asked.
Yeah, okay, I'm just making sure. And to follow up with Mr. Evans was talking about, you know, he said we don't dictate to the state or county, of course, because they're going by ordinances mostly, but what we do dictate is whether the project gets approved or not. No matter what the state or the county says, it still comes before this board, and if, either way, it can go to the, to the next board, but you can't tell the state or you guys what to put on there, because you can only put what's in the ordinance, of course. But then if you didn't like something that the state did or didn't do, it can always be disapproved. I mean, it may go on to the next approval, disapproval process, but it's always a, to have that option that.
And we're working with the state all the time, too. We're, we're trying to negotiate traffic improvements with them that would help our roadways, or our roadways that would help take trips off of 235 and help their roadway. So we're working together, but you are correct, it is a clear division of who's responsible for improvement.
Okay. Mr. Gotch, were you privy to any of the, on number five? And we're, this is from the Department of Public Works, and y'all have got some comments, and said, on number five, has any consideration been given to the queuing along westbound approach at the intersection of Maryland 235 and Airport View Drive? Was there any? What was the discussion on that?
Well, I think, if I remember correctly, our letter came out right before State Highway's letter came out. So State Highway, State Highway was making comments just after we did, we're just throwing up questions. And are you curious about the trips going across from Airport View across?
No, it just said, as I say in number five, it was, let me back up here. Has any consideration been given to the queuing along the westbound approach at the intersection of Maryland 235 and Airport View Drive? One, who asked the question and who answered it?
I did see a note from the state that said queuing lengths were acceptable.
Okay. And they'll go over that one more time before you.
Right, we're not at final engineering yet.
Okay. Well, you can pass that along, that we kind of were thinking about that. Okay, anybody else have any questions? Mr. Evans?
Just one request. You know, we, we sit here, we try to do what we can with the confines of the comprehensive plan. And, and so with regard to aesthetics of, especially commercial endeavors, we have, from time to time, asked applicants to do things such as putting up, I'm gonna call them faux windows on the sides of walls. We've been successful along the way. You can see that if you look at the Dollar General, and you can see it if you look at the Tractor Supply. They both have incorporated those suggestions that we made with regard to, they're fake windows, and they have shutters, and they, but they, but they break up the line of the building, and they're aesthetically pleasing, they're much better than a long line. And so I'd like the applicant to consider doing that. We have been remiss on, from time to time, on, on asking that, but I'm gonna ask you to do that. I think, I think it helps the project, I think it helps the community. And, you know, I was speaking earlier this evening, we did it on the Route 5 Dollar General. We, you know, we have a berm, we have plantings, we have all those things, and then Southern Marathon Electric comes in and puts a diagonal telephone pole in the middle of the berm and sticks it up against a telephone pole. I think that's short sighted. I think they could have done something differently, like putting a laminated pole up, which would have made aesthetically, you have telephone poles, we can't do anything about that. It's cost too much money to put this stuff underground. So we have to deal with those. So I do think that there's an opportunity for you guys, not necessarily if you're heading north, because that, the lot before you get there is actually really high, and there's very little you can see between where you're going to be, you know, with your, with your other plantings and that. But along 944, there might be an opportunity to do something like that, that probably would be, I think, would be helpful aesthetically. Okay?
I'll take that.
Go ahead. I concur with Commissioner Evans that looking at the color elevations of the property, I honestly was surprised that the, they use CMUs for a lot of these buildings. I thought, just ignorance, that a lot of these buildings were made more disposable, if you will. And to see that the field block is using a split face CMU, which is textured and has a nice feel for it, that was, I was pleasantly surprised to see that. But then I saw that, you know, the higher rim of the property has a painted smooth face CMU, and that just reminds me of, of, you know, from my own place back in Philly, some ghetto garages that were just basically, you know, painted white with just, just, you know, the, the cinder blocks and such. So, so I highlighted it because, you know, it was something that kind of threw out, threw me, threw me off essentially, but I think, as Commissioner Evans said, perhaps some kind of windows or something, even if they're faux windows, you know, on the, the street facing, to make it look a little bit less industrial, a little bit more inviting and stuff. I mean, I know the area in general is a bit industrial, and you got your, your transmission shops there, and you got your tractor supplies and stuff. But I think that that'd be a small ask in order to make the, the property just a little more inviting from the street view for our residents and such. We've had some successes with other, you know, with, with 7-Eleven, for example, we did. The best example of what we're describing is probably next to Dick's Sporting off of Buck Hewitt Road. Years ago, when they were, they were constructing that, we were concerned about that long line of buildings that were going to be running along Buck Hewitt Road. And those, the developer put together a plan where they mitigated that by plantings. They used a fence, not necessarily applies here, but they used a black fence, so people wouldn't walk out from behind the buildings across the street. And then they used those shadow windows along the way. If you drive by there today, you really don't even notice that there's a building there. Wildwood Parkway is the same way next to Wildwood, if you drive past Wildwood, you know, if you look to the right, you don't realize that that's a berm. It was put there decades ago. But little things like that, I think, help businesses like O'Reilly and Tractor Supply and others, you know, to sort of soften, they are industrial uses, but to sort of soften the, the look in a community, even though we don't have those tools to make you do it. We'd like to think you wouldn't do it.
I'd like to add on to Mr. Fazekas, is also on the, I'll say, the southern facing side of that building that faces the residential property, a faux window on, on that side, or two, would look, make O'Reilly's look a little bit better also when you pull in there, instead of having a stark side of the building. Anybody else have anything?
Well, to go along with the request for the fencing, and I realize it's not addressed here, albeit a later time, but it's the lighting. But to me, when you have the lighting, you almost, to protect the residential areas, is where you want some sort of solid fencing, so you don't have that forever night light, because undoubtedly, you're gonna keep your lights on, just for security, I'm assuming, 24 hours a day. And if you, the direction of the light downward, but at the same time, fencing, if you've got residential area there, to try to block out some of that, in my mind, is, is another reason for the fencing.
Good point.
And the one thing I do like, having been on that other board, is at least you do have the sidewalks to nowhere there. And I agree with it, because if you all don't put them in, nobody will, okay? And in time, they will connect.
Mr. Gotch is gonna take care of that.
What's that?
Mr. Gotch is gonna take care of that.
Oh, yeah. And he's got plenty of money to do it with, too, right?
Just then.
Where does this, and I didn't look at it when I drove by there today, where does that line up with the airport lining, the approach to the airport? Just to, again, as a thing to think about when you're establishing your lighting, as far as directing everything down. Because I know it does come across there around just northbound of the outback.
Mr. Gotch, you wanna come back up?
It's north of there.
I thought it was stuck.
No, sir.
Hey, this is a newbie, I ask dumb questions.
Most of the approach comes over Woods of Myrtle Point, and Oak Crest is right across the street from it.
Right there at the motel?
Oak Crest is actually a little bit further north, where the Aldi is. So if you're coming across to the airport, you're in between Woods at Myrtle Point on Route 4, and then right near the Oak Crest and coming across 235 Way south of here.
Okay.
This was the A, is it the A4 overlay, which is the seven to one going up? The properties that have been developed around there, like Oak Crest, I think the, the clear zone was over 100, already had Oak Crest.
Well, I wasn't thinking about it, I was thinking about lighting as far as night, night arrivals.
And, and most of the lighting standards now require down lighting.
Yes. I'm just throwing it out as input, that when they're doing this, for not only the local residents, you do have people like me that are trying to find that runway.
It would, it would not impact the runway at night.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, I'll open it now to public testimony, if there's anybody that has any questions, they can come up at this time. I can go off my sign-in sheet. Mr. Camp, did you have anything you wanted to question?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Could you give us your name, could you give us your name and address again, please?
Oh, yes, John Camp, 9221 Bell Mill Road in Potomac, Maryland. I just wanted to say firstly, I welcome O'Reilly's coming in, any, any commercial development of our project is all for the better, with, you know, it just enhances, I think, everybody's business. That's good. No, I. No, I, just a comment, you know, on the oil issue, I know I may be stretching the truth, but I've been in the business for about 40 years and I've seen auto parts stores, I've handled them from leasing and shop services, et cetera, too. You know, I guess when you say how many are going to be changing their oil in the parking lot, is one too many, is 20 too many or two too many? I don't know. My guess is one is too many. And I just wanted to make sure that maybe we could put up some signs that say, you know, no dumping, something like protective, or something just around the stormwater pond, because all that oil, anything in there is going to end up on my property. And certainly, I don't want that problem. You know, over the years, 10 people a year do it, it ends up being a lot of oil flowing into the property, flowing into the systems and gucking up all the rest of the systems, too. So I think stormwater, I'm sure Boulder's going to do a good job with stormwater, manage it down the river. I just rented it, I want to make it part of the record that it is an issue with stormwater. I think we all know that. It all goes, you know, downhill, I'm kind of at the bottom, and I just want to make sure that gets addressed properly. That's all, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wait.
Yeah, I had a question from before about where exactly is your property compared to this?
It's the Dollar General next door.
You're the Dollar General next door?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear before.
That's okay, I was just wondering where exactly it was.
Sure.
Just making sure you wasn't south of that.
So it's north.
Right, you're north.
We're north, right.
Right.
Water grows to the north from, down the hill from Tractor Supply all the way, all the way down, right? And I don't know, you know, what kind of stormwater management happened before, but we had a lot of, I know I had a lot of water on that property when we built it, and I just want to make sure I don't increase that any more than is. Hopefully, the plan will decrease it going forward.
Do you get a lot of water from behind you?
Down off the hill.
That's what I mean, that's probably where, I'm just, from this area, that area. It looks like to me, most of your water would come from, you know, there's a driveway, couple of drives down that goes back and up and stuff, and back there seems to be quite a slope, so.
We handle, we've got a, obviously, there's a stormwater management area right in front of the store.
Right.
And there's piping that goes, there's a huge underground storage unit underneath that parking lot also, also. And then all that flows into two areas right to the north of, on our property, right to the north of that, too. So we hold a lot of capacity in that, and we work real hard to get it there so that we wouldn't flood the downhill neighbors also. And I know it always happens from time to time, everybody gets flooded.
Sure.
So if anything we can do to prevent that, it's, you know, it's better for everybody.
Does your stormwater management mitigate itself with your bio retention areas and pond, or does it take it back across 235 or something to?
Oh, no, it stays on site.
All stays on site?
Yeah, it does. I mean, there is an outflow. We're designed to handle, I'm not an engineer, I'm a developer, we're designed to handle the capacity that was there before and not let any more out that was there before.
Got you, okay.
It's just my understanding that that's what we do on our property, we work real hard to get there.
Okay.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
It wasn't always that way. I mean, before the new stormwater management regs came into play, water sort of flowed. But once they came into play, when the developers came forward, question we used to ask was, are you willing to build to the new standard? That was a question that came up a lot, and most all developers, oh, yeah, we are, because they wanted to go forward. And so having to control the water on your parcel is a requirement. You have to, you have to address the water, stormwater off of your parcel. And so, but to Joe's point, where these places are, there's a hill, that hill behind there, there's got to be a ton of water that rolls off the top of that hill. And I don't know really how you have Dollar Store, Tractor Supply, anybody else mitigate water that comes off of that hill. So hopefully, you control it, control it downstream so that the water doesn't, the velocity of water doesn't pick up and create all kinds of issues along the way. You know, and people pay attention to that sort of thing. If it's not, if it doesn't work and it's not working, then it has to be fixed. It's much more expensive to fix it after the fact than it is to do it the right way the first time.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to come up during public testimony? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public testimony, and was there anything else you wanted to add?
Nope.
Now, you want to tell me the things that we suggested that you might want to do?
Sure, I can summarize. From my notes here, it looks like taking a look at the top of the retaining wall, seeing how we can make that aesthetic for the residential developments, potentially a fence to the south side of the property, as well as faux windows along the state highway facing side, as well as the south residential facing side of the building, I believe. Oh, and last one was signs for preventing service or dumping on site.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, just one more part, and actually, he left and it's too bad, because it's really hard, it's really hard to regulate bad behavior. So you can put up all the signs in the world, and unless someone's going to police the fact that someone's going to go out and add some oil, it's much like putting up a sign at the outside of a liquor store saying no consumption of liquor on the parking lot. That doesn't work very well either. I mean, but I mean, you put sign up because you were asked to. I mean, that's the right, that's the right thing to do. So, and with regard to the dumping in the pond, I mean, common sense, not very common, but I'm hopeful that doesn't happen, I guess.
One quick question. On those three things that I had written down, just like you did, that you addressed, you're not saying that the applicant is willing to put signs up, put a fence up, or put the faux windows on the front of the south side?
I would need to discuss it with them.
That's what I'm saying, so the only reason I was clarifying that is because if we make a motion and we wanted that, if it's not part of a condition.
Condition.
You know, we would have to make that a condition, or, I mean, you can discuss all you want, if it's not said that it has to be done, so if we feel like it.
You have to say it, it's got to be part of the motion.
Right, right. Just a quick note about that, I just wanted to.
I wanted to make sure.
We would have to figure out how to word them, because it would be some little bit of wording, so maybe before motion, we take a little break or something. That would be to you if we needed that, but.
We could do that, the applicant just gave us that, most of that wording.
Yeah, okay.
And we got it on tape.
Let me also bring up one more quick thing, since we're talking about motions and conditions. I want to say, a couple of years ago, the board started adding the language of any road improvement had to be constructed prior to, or concurrent, to be concurrent with the issue of the occupancy permit. Well, then land, you started putting it on here, which is a good thing, but it only says any road improvements required by the state or county. We have asked developers to do things before, like add a turn lane, like out of Bay Ridge subdivision, add another turn lane that go in south or north. And if that's not required, they technically don't have to do that, so I, no?
No, if you make that a condition, so the next time you'll see your minutes and the motion you made, it'll be one of your conditions. If you make that a condition, we'll make it a condition. So you know how that's A, always A? So if you make an additional improvement, that'll be B.
What I was going to say is, why can't we include in A, any road improvement required by the state or county, or any other road improvements agreed to by the applicant must be concurrent with the issue of the certificate of occupancy?
We can do that.
Kind of puts it right into A, you don't need A and B.
We could do that, but I also like to be specific on what you've asked.
Also, we would leave that open to, in case we specifically ask for something, so it would be, okay.
Yeah, yes.
The only thing I was trying.
Like for Magic Tunnel, I'm sorry.
The only thing I was trying not to do was, I know we've had, in speaking, a couple different county attorneys have come up and said, you know, if you ask for it on this one, you should ask for it on the other ones. I kind of thought that was a blanket policy to say whatever, it would be on every motion that, I didn't know if that was the legal.
If you want me to add it, I'll be happy to.
Well, it's not only up to me, I was just saying.
But I like to be specific, if you say you want something to happen, I like to spell it out, what it is you want to have happen.
So your point would be that this A typically is what we include in the motion. If we had a project that we discussed and we wanted.
Southbound turn lane or something.
Right, condition A.
Right on.
We can do that, oh, here we go, here comes the attorney.
Right.
Now we're in trouble. Mr. Hauser, it's nice to see you, how are you this evening?
For the record, John Hauser, Assistant County Attorney. See if I can clarify this one up. If there is a specific road improvement, the planning commission would like for any project, absolutely state that specifically, and it should in the minutes, it should in, certainly in the motion, it should be recorded separately as its own specific.
Condition, okay.
And the reason we do that is one, so we can be very clear, so that, remember, if we're going to have conditions, if we're going to go above and beyond the requirements of the CZO in any respect, because this planning commission says we have to, we need to be able to know with clarity and precision what it was the planning commission wanted. So there's no confusion, six months, nine months, 18 months down the line, however it might be, that when we say any road improvements ordered by the planning commission, we can actually look back and specifically know that is, without necessarily subjecting us to having to go back and listen to this from start to finish and hear all the commentary and all that.
So like you and Brandy said, if we had a specific, not that this does, if we had a specific, it would just be noted as another.
Correct.
Correct.
Condition, okay.
We would keep A the way it is.
Okay.
Correct.
Later on, we could be B, and which would be whatever.
That would be fine.
I just started that.
And then by having the language of B in there, so we were to say, just in any old given situation, build, you know, an extra southbound turn lane, that'd be condition A, and if condition B, we would still keep our regular language and any other road improvement that might be required by the county, subject to the conference of zoning ordinance. That does not invalidate condition A right before it. But the best practice, almost the required practice, would be spelling out any condition going forward.
Okay, that's perfect then.
Yeah, and that's true for any, any condition, not just road improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser.
Thank you, both of you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So are we clear about the conditions we want to add if we move forward?
I am.
Okay.
The three.
That's all that's necessary.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman, and that's to Mr. Gottsch.
Gottsch, why don't you grab a microphone and say this? In your size today.
Earlier, you stated that you were going to look at the stormwater management plan.
Correct.
Is there any, you haven't done, I mean, you all haven't done that yet, correct?
Only at the concept level.
And you're, do you know what, was there any concerns when you looked at the concept level?
No. They're proposing three stormwater management facilities on the site, basically.
Which would contain the water there?
One on the side, one near the front. And so those facilities would have to drain into a storm drainage system, which goes past the lot next door to them.
Because I saw that on the plan, but I couldn't, I don't know if that's going to take care of the issue of the water that's coming.
What State Highway does is they make you analyze the 10-year storm in the storm drain system, but also make you check what happens to the hydraulic rating, the water level, the water depth in a 25-year storm as well.
Okay.
So they're going to make you analyze the pipes, not only for the 10-year, but the 25-year, just to show what happens.
Which you will do, you haven't done.
They would have to do that.
Yeah, that's part of the new stormwater management regulations. That's why it got, it got much more, I don't want to say difficult, but it got much more stringent with regard to controlling the water on that, on your parcel.
So can approval be contingent upon any?
Well, and I was going to bring this up, so let's say that these are installed, and I just made the comment a minute ago, it's better to do them right way than having to go back and retrofit them. So along the way, if they fail, or if they fail, then could you describe the process if they're not doing what they're supposed to do?
Okay. So to answer your question, they can't get a state highway permit without addressing all the state highway stormwater concerns, so they have to follow the rules.
So that would just stop the.
Yes.
Process.
Never get their approval and never get the permit.
They would never get the permit to proceed.
As far as the stormwater goes, there is a maintenance agreement that a developer would sign for the stormwater management. And MDE is continually imposing more inspections on stormwater facilities. So we have to go out and inspect every stormwater management facility every three years. And so we come up with a list, to get the as-built approved, you got to be designed, or you got to be constructed in accordance with the design plan. So three years later, we're going to go out there and see if the facility is still functioning. If not, we write a letter that says, hey, here's the things you need to do to improve your stormwater facility. And then the developer makes those changes. If not, we can issue citations against the development.
And the county has those same requirements?
Well, that's our, that's our stormwater requirement.
That's what I mean, right, 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 right.
So we will be looking at the facilities because they would be on site. State highway, if they're not in the state highway right away, the state highway would default to us and say, put them on your inspection instead of state's.
So if Mr. Camp, that gentleman, I believe that's what he said his name, if he notices a considerable difference after they developed, he could turn that into your office?
If a facility was not functioning correctly, yes. The easiest way is.
Before an inspection, you know, something was going awry.
We have the 3-1-1 system that somebody can just go and drop a flag and make a complaint and.
And it works really well.
Well, it's.
Are you being facetious?
I'm not. It works extremely well.
All right.
We just have a high volume of notifications that come through every month. It's overwhelming, number of, but that's the easiest way to make a notification to Public Works that, hey, we want you to go out and look at this. And the highway crew or the construction inspection, depending on what the problem is, would go look at it.
I have heard that you all do a good job with that.
Yeah.
I have. That you get, I mean, that the response time is.
Not everybody says that.
Forgot about the 3-1-1. Okay, that's good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One last comment, and this is actually to Deputy Director Jenkins. Former Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Evans and I have all expressed some concerns in the past under Mr. Hunt's leadership with Lugham, that master plans, this is according to Page 1 of the staff report, that master plans should be generated for each of the town centers to ensure that visual and functional quality development adhere to standards for landscaping, architectural design, on-site and off-site advertising access, lot coverage, and open source and buffering from adjacent developments and transportation corridors. Unless I am mistaken, I don't think this project, which is under Hollywood Growth Area. Am I mistaken?
No.
Oh, okay.
Just FYI.
Yeah, okay. That we don't have clear direction as a board on what Hollywood, or for that matter, Charlotte Hall, New Market, McCacksville, and Ponty Point should have in terms of design. I understand there's politics involved, there's money involved in terms to do a study. I'm just, wanted to put it there for the record that anytime that we hear any other cases moving forward in these areas, I'm going to bring it up for the public record that, as far as I understand, we don't have a comprehensive plan for these growth areas. And that, I guess, my desire or request is that the county.
And that, I guess my desire or request is that the county puts more energy and more effort into figuring out how we can develop these things. Because as a board here, we are trying to apply a standard for a small part of the community, and we're using a very broad scope, a broad brush, if you will, for the entire county. And what might be good for Piney Point might not be good for Hollywood. So, I don't need a response. I'm just explaining to you that I think that this is a concern of mine and former and current board members, and that I think this issue needs to be addressed moving forward as you now enter this new role that you have. And I just hope that we can work with you in order to figure out how we can accomplish that. That's all I want to say.
I know you said I don't have to, but I'd like to see.
Okay.
Sure, sure.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate those, and I definitely can understand the frustration of we have town centers, but we don't have true direction and guidance on how to handle those town centers. I think as we're going through our comprehensive plan update, that that is something we need to include in our goals and objectives to start to study these areas, have small area master plans, things of that nature. Because then, once it's in our comprehensive plan, then we have that direction as staff to move forward with those.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I'd like to hear your comment about that. Courtney, so if you go back historically to the other comprehensive plans, they all say that very same thing. They all say that. What we, most recently, it was, when it was brought up, about small area master plans. There's an expense to that, and there's a commitment to that with regard to the landowners and all the rest of that. But we can't have, you can't afford not to have some sort of a master plan. We are at, and I don't mean to sound negatively, we are at the mercy of developers. They bring whatever they want to bring here. That's what they do. We, and we are relegated to saying no. That's really what we do. I mean, we're going to put a few conditions on things, but it would be so much better if, when someone came to us, we would say, this is our, this is what we want, as opposed to, no, we don't want this, no, we don't want that, we'd like to have faux windows, you know, that sort of, that sort of thing. And the leadership, you know, I'm not going to beat up on current county commissioners, two of them are brand spanking new, but historically, it's never been, the leadership of the county has never been committed to doing it. They just haven't. And I, and maybe that's because of constituents, I don't know what it's an issue of, or whatever, but I, the last conversation I have was, small area master plans are too expensive. We can't afford to do them. My comment is, we can't afford not to do that. We have development districts that need to be tweaked, 50% set-asides in development districts. You know, we have to be talking about infrastructure, proximate, development proximate to the infrastructure. Is it adequate? Is it going to be adequate? You know, we talk about these things, we talk about them sort of an anomalous.
I do understand that they've been in the comprehensive plan over the last, however many, but I think going forward, maybe being a little bit more specific as far as goals and objectives, which do we want to look at first? Which one?
Right.
Prioritizing, putting something in there about, you know, trying to seek funding. Funding, of course, is always a concern, but I think the big thing is to have it in there and have very specific goals and objectives, so staff knows how to move forward, and, you know, ultimately, the county commissioners approve the comprehensive plan.
They do.
So, that helps give staff direction.
Well, and we have done some work. I mean, just, you know, we, you know, and when asked from time to time, it's like, where was that village? It's on a shelf someplace. And so, it's not on a shelf anymore, here. And so, and I'm just saying, and that is sort of a place to begin. You know, I mean, you have an enormous amount of work that go into these things. I mean, we have developers all the time coming into our village centers and town centers wanting to develop. We have, you know, we have folks that come in and make comments with regard to stormwater And we, up here, I mean, we just, we have to, you know, respond to what we, to what we see. And I've talked to you about this before with regard to, you know, we're going to get ready to talk about it, you know, coming up with regard to housing, you know, affordable housing, all-inclusive word. Be so nice for a developer to come forward, and we were to say, this is the housing that we need, as opposed to what you got. I mean, it just, it just makes perfect sense to me. I mean, I'm a business person, I don't work for county government, probably a good thing. But I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, you're much better off to be able to share what you want as opposed, as opposed to struggle about telling people no and making conditions, you know? I mean, you'd be surprised, you may well be, if you tell them what they, what you would like to see, they would just say, okay, we'll do that.
I agree, our comprehensive plan is going to be...
Okay.
...to get it...
Okay.
Back and forward in the right direction.
Thank you, I wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We deliberated over this. Would anybody like to make a motion with the considerations and conditions that we've discussed?
Make a motion.
Mr. Fazekas, go for it.
Mr. Chairman, in a matter of concept site plan, CSP 22-0120, O'Reilly's Auto Parts, Hollywood, having accepted a staff report and having made a finding of the objectives of section 60.6 of the comprehensive zoning ordinance have been met, and knowing that the referenced project has met all requirements for concept approval, I move that the concept site plan be approved with the following four conditions. One, any road improvements required by the state or county must be concurrent with the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Two, signs must be posted prohibiting service of vehicles in the parking lot. Three, faux windows to be installed in the construction of the building along the street view and the south-facing side of the building. And four, lighting not to, not to, I'm looking for the word, not to shine beyond the property limits.
Okay. Anybody?
What about, you want to...
Yeah, friendly amendment.
Federation of a fence top.
Fence on top of the retaining wall.
Yeah, a fence is part of the buffer yard.
Have to say how high.
Was that to the rear of the property, Howard?
On the south side.
South side of the property?
I accept that amendment, yeah.
Rear and south, okay.
Rear and south, we should say. That's where the retaining wall is.
There'd be a fifth condition about a fence along the south and...
Rear.
Rear. Side of the property.
Joe, one more friendly amendment, if you wanted to. I think we should put an approved APF form received from Department of Public Works and Transportation.
Yes, that, I agree with that as well. So, number six would be the...
APF.
APF form from Public Works.
Works and Transportation, an approved form.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second by Mr. Brown. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. Mr. Van Kirk?
Aye.
Ms. Redberg?
Aye.
Ms. Summers?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Fazekas?
Aye.
I want to vote aye. Heard what we need.
Thank you.
Jay, thank you for coming out this evening. Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion or adjourn.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We adjourn.